All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll start with a pledge and then a prayer by Commissioner Patton, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious Father in heaven, we come before you this evening in a humble manner we know how, thanking you for this day and our present health, strength, and energy. We're thankful for the community in which we live. We pray, Father, that we will be attentive and make decisions that will be for the best interest of our community and for the betterment of our community. Be with us tonight, not just tonight, but always. Keep us from the evil one, in Christ's name. Amen.
Good job. Welcome everybody out tonight. First item of business is approval of minutes.
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Next item is approval of paying the bills.
And make the motion, we approve paying the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor receiving the motion with aye?
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Going under old business, the first item is accept the blacktop beds. And we do have a bid for blacktopping here from Scotty's. And the only bid, and that was at $105 per ton for the 23, 24 season. Prep, edge keys are $17 an hour, and in street millings, $1,350 an hour with a five-hour minimum if that, we choose to do that. That is based on the KEAPI asphalt index.
How far is that going to go with our budget?
About as far as last year.
As I say, that price is a little higher.
That's going to get us somewhere in the range of...
1,800 ton?
No, about 25,000. Because we didn't spend last year's blacktop money.
I was going by what we're budgeting.
Plus next.
I don't know, I'm sure if I move it, except Scotty's bid for asphalt.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor receiving the motion with aye?
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Next item is to sell the F-250 work truck. And we do have a bid in here on deals.com for, I guess our portion is $2,780.
You're right.
And then the buyer's premium's on top of that, so. To...
Make the motion.
Steve Everly, Everly Brothers Racing. Oh, that's Beaver Dam.
Yeah, you know, Portage County Road, right? I think it was in County.
I know Steve.
Make the motion, we accept the bid.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor receiving the motion with aye?
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Next item is the second reading on the ordinance for the Airbnb. And I will say before we get into this, just to make everyone sure, I know there was a letter came through today from owner of an Airbnb of a unit here that uses Airbnb and telling us that they're no longer paying the tax because it comes from Airbnb. And there's a problem with the state right now because Airbnb company has not been paying it. So I'm just going to let them know in a nice letter that they are still, as the owners of the property, liable for it regardless of who is collecting it. So just, if you get any phone calls, that's what it's about. But I would entertain a motion to accept that second reading.
I make the motion, we accept the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And nothing changed from last month, by the way, so. Okay, those in favor receiving the motion with aye?
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Moving down to new business, this is one thing I would like to request. Number one is Brownfield. Now, for those who are not familiar, Brownfield is properties that have been industrial or heavy manufacturing through the years, and they're up for possible redevelopment. And I'm going to ask for approval to request a Phase One and Two assessment on the sites, which would be the old wastewater plant. It's done by the state. They're done free of charge. And what it will do, if there is anything down there that needs to be cleaned up, we need to know about it before we do anything with it anyway, because before any grant or any kind of funding's done on it, they're going to require all this. And I know there's been some talk of some possible uses for the property. I've talked with Blake Edge, who's a grad. He feels like since it was a wastewater facility and we did get all the closures from Division of Water, he doesn't expect there to be much, if any, kind of problems down there, but it is something we need to do. So I'd like to request permission to go ahead and reply for that Phase One and Two site assessment.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor receiving the motion with aye?
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. I'm going to hold off on the number two till the next meeting because there's a little question on that on code enforcement, board members and their terms. But then item three under new business is approval of the 2024 motor vehicle and watercraft property rate calculation, which was in your packet.
Is that in your packet?
Oh, Amy told me they had it.
Okay.
Do they not? Well, it's one of those, it's the one tax rate that's set by the state.
Right.
We have no say on it.
We don't have any say over it anyway.
Other than to approve it, and it's the same as last year.
I move to approve the motor vehicle watercraft tax rate for 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
That's where we're at now.
What is the date?
It's the same as it was last year, but I don't know what it is.
You're going to have to check back on that one tomorrow. It was one of those that we don't ever have to worry about, so we just kind of went through. But I do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor receiving the motion with aye?
Aye.
Post same. That motion passes. Jim, you have anything?
Yes. Yesterday, I was asked by an eight or nine-year-old boy in my church if I ever saw the mayor. And I said I do. And he had a suggestion for a Beaver Dam, Kentucky sign that he wanted presented to the mayor. And I had him to give his name and address, and I told him I would present that to you. Connor Monroe.
Okay.
And he, he saw that one of the other cities had a new sign, and he got worried about ours, and he drew that on his own. And asked me, and I said, I personally know the mayor when he asked me, and I said, I will give that to the mayor at the meeting tomorrow night.
Okay. Well, we appreciate this.
Did he send him a letter?
Yeah. Does he know we do have signs at the...
Yeah, he does. But he, he was worried that we don't have a new one, though.
Well, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else?
No, thank you. Thanks.
No, I'm just ready tonight.
Kevin?
I'm good. The only thing I wanted to say is, this weekend, we had two different orders, and I got to haul the people back and forth and back and forth. They bragged so much on our little town about how in the world did we do this, and I'm real proud of our, our little city and glad we can do what we can do. And we am.
Larry?
I have close session to discuss on that.
Mike?
Just our two new guys are getting closer. They're getting antsy, they're ready to go.
We're getting antsy and we're ready for them to come.
Yes, we are. Their cadaver date is the first of October.
Is it 12 weeks? Is that how long it is? Is it 12 weeks?
No, probably 18.
So it's 18 or 19.
There's maybe 20. I think they're getting ready to cut it down like they're fixing to be, start the first of year. New recruits has to do 94 hours, I believe it is, on line before they go. So that cuts two weeks out of it. And they got to take a test when they get there to make sure that they did listen to it. So they're getting ready to go October, they're looking forward to it. We are too. Glad to get them back.
They have cut it down. It used to be, what, 24, five weeks?
It was 22, 23, maybe it was.
Cut it a couple times, I think, and they're talking about...
Yeah, it was 16, it went 18, 21, back and forth a little bit.
They're still talking about doing a new one in Madisonville?
I hadn't heard that.
I think there was some talk about it at one time.
I think it's for in-service.
Yeah.
Okay. Mike?
I guess, don't you?
No.
Vicky?
Thank you, dear.
Is this where I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am.
The first one, I don't look in the right place. How would you go about, or would it be appropriate to put a 20 mile an hour sign between 62 and Goshen? Those two hot roads and the detour off of Main Street, they're all 35. And I know there's one on Fourth Street coming off Main, which no one pays attention to.
Well, they don't.
But there's nothing between Goshen and 62 saying 20 miles an hour. I walk there all the time. And I didn't know if it wouldn't be appropriate to put one since there's so much traffic. And the only reason I ask is because, once I took a flash photograph at Newark Airport right after my meltdown, and I was told real quickly, no flash photography, it's posted everywhere before you come to the airport. But I got off another plane, and it was not posted anywhere. And the police had to agree that it was not posted when I left the one plane to get to the terminal before train starting. Once they verified that, then we were okay. But at the time, that came to mind when I'm wondering what these people are running through, why they don't know it's residential area and it's, and it's 20 miles an hour. I didn't know if that would be a valid question for you.
We can get a sign put up? Because all city streets, unless otherwise noted, are 20 mile an hour.
And some of them say so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're done.
Is that the federal highway? Is that...
Wait, you're talking about...
This street.
Right here.
Broad, overall, okay. Broad in Madison.
I knew it was one of those.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's on Ridgecrest, I won't go there.
I know there's one on Ridgecrest.
But I think there's one on the over end.
I don't remember. I've seen it, but I couldn't tell where it's at.
I think there's one on that end.
I, I just know this one that gets shorter and shorter. That's usually about the place where they start gunning it to make it up the next hill. So it doesn't really matter that if they don't know, then, I mean, if they do know, then, well, that's obvious. They're disregarding.
Yeah.
Some people making a detour, we have a lot of truckers that determine before the signs went up, and the detour was there, it's like, I don't want to go down there. And it would end up going all the way to the end of 473, back to Hartford to get to another place to come through before the signs went up. That was just one question, I have another question.
All right.
What's the status on the alley behind 402 with Broad Street?
We've already voted to.
I have not received any paperwork, and this is the fourth summer, which Mr. Allen knows he went and spoke to almost before this year. We can't plant there. And it's made my mother very sad. And I just don't know.
Turned over, turned over.
Yeah, we voted to a quick claim detour, your mom.
We have not seen any paperwork, and until I know where we could put a little border fence, exactly where to put it, so I can try to move some flowers there. It's...
It's important to her.
Yeah. It, you know, right now, the building has been in the alley since July 1st. And they're burning it slowly, and it's, it's gone.
They're what?
They're burning it.
The building?
Yeah. The last two weeks, it's been burning.
That's a no-no.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Well, we kind of wonder about that, because you can't hang your laundry up.
They're taking it apart.
Yeah.
But it's not in a building yet.
Yeah, but that's still... Can you check on that, David?
Where's it at?
Right up here on...
315...
Nutley Castle South.
Fourth Street. It's there.
Her mom's a house on the corner of Fourth and Broad, so it'll be right behind.
On the other side of the street. Do you, do you have a copy of yours and your mother's deed?
Yeah, we, I thought we got one from...
So this, Mr. Conway, I'm...
I thought we had been informed that we've voted on that.
County attorney? This is my original. Costs $1,500.
So you've already had it surveyed then?
Yes, we had it, we had to wait that summer, a few months to get it done. And the night that the stake was put up, it disappeared.
This is a description of what?
My mother's property.
We quit claimed her alley. The alley, but she's still going to have a description of the alley.
Anyway, when I spoke to the county attorney, he asked me to scan the same thing to him that I said to you. And I'm not getting answers back from anybody. Mom's 94. My mom was 94. She's wondering if she just waits till she dies to take care of it, you know?
No, because we already had to vote.
It's not, it's not a problem voting, but, but you still have to have a description of the alley is, is the, is the issue. And if you've got, if you've got four calls, then we can have a description. But you can't just say, indeed such and such an alley. I'll take it, this is the alley?
Yeah, that's the alley, and I think that's the building you're talking about that's been, being torn down.
It was pushed into the alley, and now they're burning it. On their property, though.
Wait, they pushed it into the alley?
Well, I think they didn't mean for it to go. They had calls against the armor.
And just kind of slid down there.
And it just kind of, I don't think it went well. They should have taken it apart differently.
I think the building was partly on the alley to begin with.
It was. According to the deed, it is.
And to give him due, that building has always been there. He didn't put it there.
Right.
It's been there longer than I've been alive. I know, because I used to visit the lady that lived there. And it was scary then.
The building's on who?
The bill, the one that's coming down was part, it was on the alley and part of it was on the other property.
That's why they had it tore down, because it's on the alley.
Okay. The, the other property belonging to whom?
I don't know who owns it now. Bill Case was the one who owned it.
Bill Case property, and his son Mike Felty is the one that blast drove through mom's yard.
The problem is, the, the problem is that if there's a building there, and it sits there for 15 years, the ground under the building belongs to whoever the building belongs to. So, so at this point, if this, if this survey is accurate, whatever part of this building that encroaches on the alley actually belongs to the Case property, okay? The city is, of course, it's always questionable on these alleys, well, the city ever owned it anyways?
That's...
Because the city never accepted it, right?
Right.
And it's just like all these other alleys where there's been a subdivision, the, the plan of the subdivision was never approved by the city, and it was never deeded to the city, and therefore, the best the city can do is give a quick claim.
Quick claim.
Okay. You can, you can fathom up a description here of some sort, just, just knowing what's north and south, and it's 15 foot wide. But what I'm saying to y'all is if the survey's accurate, the city absolutely does not own the ground under the building.
And it was about three or four foot onto the...
Right. That's not the city's property. That, that belongs by adverse possession to whoever owns the building.
The whole strip of the alley, that three or four feet, the whole strip?
No, no.
Just that little square?
Just right here.
Okay, just that little square.
Just that little part right there.
So even though they tore the building down, it's not going to make a difference?
Well, who's going to, who, have they torn the building down?
They're in the process.
It's flat. I can show you pictures.
Okay. There's no part of it left?
It's burned, huh?
There's no part of it left?
Piles, I think.
Piles in the alley, piles all over the place.
There's a big pile.
And it's a big burn pile, but I believe Mr. Allen's going to check that out.
There was a big pile where whoever tore the building down, or whoever tore the building down, was a big pile there. And I guess they may take a whole other time. Have you had, you hadn't had any more trouble with them mowing over that?
I'm not planting there.
Well, I know, but they haven't...
I don't want to have a problem, so I haven't planted.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but they haven't been mowing down on our, since I went off to them.
Not since I quit, not since this lifetime, because I haven't put any more flowers back.
Okay, that's, that's okay.
If I put the flowers back, that's saying, come and get it. Every year, four summers in a row.
Well, I don't think, what I'm trying to say, when I, after I talked to them, I don't think they had mowed that much.
No, but they continue to park there.
The problem...
They take the whole park.
Are they working in the alleyway?
Yeah.
The problem with the...
Wherever they want. And they know I'm not going to plant there. I'm waiting to find where I can put the fence.
The problem with a quick claim deed is that basically all it says is, if the city owns it, we're deeding it to you. If the city doesn't own it, we're not deeding you anything. And, and that's all the city can do, is give a deed a quick claim, but there's no warranty to it whatsoever. That's why I said special warranty, it means no warranty. So the city, when the city deeds this alley to somebody, it's about that much better than no color of title. It's a little titled, because the city says, if we own it, we're deeding it to you. But, but a quick claim deed under these circumstances, where the city knows going in that the stink of, the property was never turned over to the city, and it's been an ongoing problem here, you know that.
Oh, mm-hmm, they're everywhere.
Yeah, everywhere. If y'all want me to do a deed of quick claim and try to draft a description off of this, yeah, I can, I, I can do it. And, and not, and even include this area where the building's falling down, it's not a standing building there, is that right?
Is that right?
Okay. But y'all clearly have to understand what you're getting, okay? You're getting a deed of quick claim. And, and if they contest your title to it, city won't be involved in it one way or the other, because the city hasn't claimed to own it.
I want to know where I can put a fence.
Please?
I want to know where we can put a fence.
To keep it from being in the alley.
If you get a deed of quick claim and you want to put a fence there, that you can put a fence, if somebody contests your right to put the fence, then a court's going to have to determine whether or not you have the right to have the fence there.
My mother's already spent the money on this. What else do we need to do?
I didn't, I didn't hear you, please.
You talking about building the fence?
I'm, I'm talking about we've already paid for the survey. And I know people pay money for landscaping, and every year, we've tried again to put flowers there, plants. Actually, the man stole my mother's bank because he was further in on the seven and a half foot, not on the middle, not in the bank. But he comes into the seven and a half foot part, way inside, I believe to intimidate her, which, that day, he did, threatened her with that track hoe, and somebody else came out, and he finally stopped. That was Easter Sunday morning, when he said he was working for the city. That was three years ago, but it's involved four summers. Are we supposed to just continually live like this, and I could go dig up your property, somebody else could dig up yours, and nothing happened because, well, it's just going to happen to you?
You know, the city, the city, I, I can tell you how to clear it up, and it's not worth going through that to clear it up, but, but this, this, this alleyway is, is no different than, than, the city has got about as much ownership of this alleyway as they've got a piece of ground five miles out of the city. They don't, the way to clear it up is determine who did the original subdividing, which goodness gracious goes back...
It was a long time ago.
Goes back probably 75 years.
And then it's been a while.
And you then have to petition the court to quiet, to title to it. And, you know, the cost of that is far greater than the ground itself. Y'all, what you've asked for is for the city to give you a deed of quick claim to what's shown on this plan, and as I understand it, they've agreed to do it. But please understand when they do it, they're not warranting that they own it. And so they're giving, they're, they're signing a deed of quick claim, if we, if we have any ownership of this, it's yours. And I'm assuming there's no consideration on it, no cost or anything, for deeding it. So it's not a problem in giving the deed a quick claim. But it's not the same as buying a piece of property in which you're getting a deed of general warranty, in which the seller is saying to you, we own it, we guarantee it, and we will stand out and guarantee you, period. A deed of quick claim, there is no warranty to it, because the city has, has never accepted this property. But if you want a deed of quick claim, they can deed it to you, but then if your question becomes, okay, you've deeded it to us, and we want to put flowers here, and somebody's interfering with that, and you come back to the city, the city's position will have to be, there's nothing we can do about it.
But we have a document.
You'll have a deed.
And then we could, if I needed to, like, we never called when plants disappeared off the porch. You know, it's not that big a deal. But if you take the time and trouble, my grandmother's plants are gone. My grandma's been gone for nearly 20 years. She planted those flowers. And they're gone. They're stolen, along with the bank that was there that kept the trash that comes down the hill out of our yard. Now, all kinds of trash, especially from the building, comes into the yard, and every Wednesday night, we got to pick it all up. A natural fence line was there. There had been a nice little family that used to live there. They picked the trash up out of the flowers every Wednesday night. They also picked flowers with my mom and Aunt's blessing. But every time we plant something, Mr. Allen saw. It was trying to grow, and it was walked off. With the cinderbox, it was deliberate. It was deliberate intimidation and threatening, not just on the alley. He was trying to put the whole 15 feet in Mom's shoulder. Because he came all the way down to the snowball bush. There used to be these other willies there.
With the smolder?
And Mr. Sander first saw the tracks next day.
Yeah, he went all the way down on their property. That was Bill, and we talked, talked to him at the time.
He went down on their property?
Mr. Brown's.
Way down.
Well, you can certainly stop him, you're going to hire a lawyer and stop him from going down on your property, period. The question I think we're being asked is, okay, if you deed, we're going to deed a quick claim, will the city, if, if he interferes with our right to use this old alleyway, will the city then defend the title to it? And the answer to that is no, because the city's not telling you that it owns it.
I don't really expect anything from the city, except if I've got, if we've got something, some sort of document saying, yes, we have something, we could, if we had to take it to court, if we did tear down a fence. You know, I'm sorry, this brings out the worst in me. I actually screamed at a total stranger, and I lived in New York 20 years, and I never screamed at anybody in the city. People do that all the time there.
So a deed of quick claim deed is saying, if we own it, we're claiming it to her, but if we don't own it, we don't own it?
That is correct. That is, that...
And that's what has already been approved.
I was going to say, if we have deeded it to you...
Now, 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 once the, the, once the deed is filed, if they decide to fence it, let's say, and from, the, the, the deed of quick claim is at least some color of title, and then the idea generally is, you take possession of the property that, that is included in the deed of quick claim, but remember, once you take it, you gotta exercise control over it for fifteen years before title ripens in the person that's exercised control over it. So, so, um, there's not a problem if the city's, uh, has indicated, "We'll give you a deed of quick claim." We can put together a description of some sort that will cover, once I know exactly what the, the, the parameters of, of, of what's included, uh, this not, you know, a deed of quick claim is easy to prepare, it's not one of those things. But, but the, it's, what I've tried to explain to them is that it's better than nothing, but it's not-
Not much better.
Not much better. And it gets better, once they start to exercise control over it, and once they, if they fence it, and, and, but the, the issue comes, if this neighbor, whoever it is, tears down the fence, or encroaches on the property, then they have to take whatever steps that they choose to stay in court to stop it.
But then it comes a civil matter, which we don't deal with civil matter.
Right, right.
And I know I've already called. Every year, I've called, and y'all have been very, very patient, and I appreciate your time and trouble.
Well, I don't understand why it hadn't been done.
I don't know.
Because we spend some time.
And I've called many times.
Yeah.
I've, I've called the county attorney, and I sent him that.
Can you go ahead?
And he has not, nobody will return my call.
No one will tell you to get your quick claim for them.
We will get a document, a quick claim deed done.
Now, especially if you have to have fifteen years, my mother will tell you she doesn't have a lot of time.
If you-
Well-
If you will, uh, uh, mark this for me, will do. I, I'll, I'll have the deed of quick claim done this week.
What do you mean, mark it?
So I know exactly where, where, what the, what areas included.
How far down it goes on your property.
Yeah, yeah, one area is open.
Whatever is on the survey that these people, I mean, it's a high-dollar piece of paper there.
And one million, one million, what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is completely open area. I don't, I don't know where it ends, and, and there is no-
The end of the alley?
Huh?
The, the end of the alley at Virginia's line-
It ends right here.
Because that was, I remember that, because we looked all that up.
It doesn't show it ended there.
It didn't go any further than there.
But it doesn't show that on the plan.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
That's, it shows it going on, instead of stopping.
Oh.
That's what he didn't want to know.
There are markers on his, on, on the property, and then he says, the man, I don't remember his name, says, that gives the seven-and-a-half feet for the alley. The marker is seven-and-a-half feet within the property line, and if the city gave up the alley, that would be seven-and-a-half feet.
This is a hundred and seventy-eight point.
That way.
Then three B. From this point to this point.
To that point.
Right.
Yeah, and that should be the end of it, right there.
Which actually-
If this is supposed to be the end of it, then you go fifteen feet in this direction, and I assume come back with the, the, the option calls here.
Seven-and-a-half feet from the edge of the garage, and that's not that much.
Yeah, starting, going beginning here. It, it's not a problem, the description, um, but I don't want to mess the plot up, so, uh-
Well, I have emailed it to Mr. Cam, and I have emailed it to Ms. Sandofer, and I can email it to him.
Well, this new property may have said something. This man is actually in my office, but he's the, he's the county attorney, this is not a county matter.
It's a city.
And it hasn't made its way to me, although he's in the next office.
Well, he's, and actually, I did send it to your email office.
Contact E.P.
Because when I said, "Oh, do you know Mr. Conway?" He said, "Well, no."
That's the only thing I agree with it.
And he said, "Well, that was my part."
Well, I'm not sure I've got it, but that's neither here nor there, and I will get it, if you will just show me, and will mark it, and get me a copy of it, okay?
Do what?
Where do I need to bring it?
Huh?
Where do I need to bring it?
I didn't think they could burn any kind of household garbage.
There's, there's three of them here. If you give me one of them, and you show me something before you leave, you won't need to bring it in.
There's more in them than how the city orders the E.P.A. lines.
Okay, here's some-
I don't know, you could burn, here was, there's limited brush.
Nine quarters city order, you done one more?
Yeah, we're done. Well, this one's a difficult to-
Would I run it through your branch?
Yeah, that's a difficult one.
The only time limit is when the state, six A to six P, or six P to six T is into a fast-
Where this line ends is in here.
We have an ordinance that burns leaves, though.
It seems like it does, it looks like it does.
There's an ordinance in there about burning leaves.
Yeah, it is an ear earnings bar.
This call, this call, this call goes, uh-
See, Mom has a house, on a few, and then she brought this property, and the alley-
Yeah, and we're up here, though.
Right.
And then this, this call goes from this point to this point, right here.
Yeah, I knew that.
And that's the only, that's the only call over there, so I gotta make the other calls up.
It can't allow that, because we cannot have ordinances that-
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's outdated.
And there is no call from here to here.
It doesn't add up with what he-
But we can still enforce that, because we are not, we can't, those, anything that says it allows cartboard or stuff is null and void when EPA passed that law, because we cannot be less strict than that.
And there's no stake or anything down here.
We can be more strict, but not less.
So they would need to be staked, probably, from y'all's standpoint. But if you get me a copy of this, I'll, I'll, I'll-
But it's still, we can still enforce it, because they say, those laws are basically null and void.
If these ones are alike-
When EPA or the state does something more stricter than what we've got.
Yeah, that's right. This, right, this one looks like that one.
I'll need to create this to a point here, and a point here.
See, now, that's, this guy here, he's got his garden right there, and, I mean, he's not mowing Mom's stuff. So wherever, and there's a straight light there we can't get to.
The only thing the city can do is give you a deed, a deed of quick claim that goes from this point to this point using this call, and, and this point to this point, and technically, I can probably use this, how many feet is it, fifteen?
Fifteen.
Okay. And then, th-this call here, where there is no stake, to this, to this point here, where there is no stake, and there needs to be one, you reverse, reverse this call. It's not, this, we can prepare the description, but I think what you're saying is that before the city even deeds it to you, some parts of this area in here are being used by somebody for, for some, by, for some purpose.
That was Miss Sandoval's garden.
Okay, I understand. But what, what, what I have to say for the city is, they can give you a deed of quick, quick claim, they can't do anything to stop these people from doing. Once you get the deed of quick, quick claim, y'all are gonna have to do it.
Hey, if they're not mowing Mom's flowers, I don't care what they do.
Okay.
You know, they have, we share poke. Gabby, I don't, didn't, I guess that's his, well, his name, he likes poke. And he and Courtney are good neighbors. I have never had trouble with neighbors before, but I've never had somebody just dig up our property.
The man actually drove his lawn mower down through on her property.
All the way through.
Then it is, then it, then it, then it is trespass, but once again, it's not something the city does about.
I know, yeah.
Okay.
But that's why she's having to deal with it.
Give me, you got a pad over there, maybe?
Yep.
Give me your phone number and name, okay?
Yeah, even running quick claim is all we do, really.
Okay.
And I appreciate y'all's attention to this.
Yeah.
Now, what has to happen, when we get this done, we have to present this to the mayor, okay? And so, once it's done, I'll get you a copy of it, and then the original goes to Mayor of Mayor's City, and then it's up to you to record it.
I read this.
You'll take it to the clerk's office and record it. Okay?
Do they know what I'm doing, what I'm going to record?
Oh, you take a, execute a deed on me and say you want to record it?
Yeah, I'll record it.
They'll take care of you.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah.
I, I said, from working a lot for a long adult, lawyers and doctors are, you know, yeah, yeah.
I'm not paying that.
Is that all we do? You know, the only other town I was at when we was meeting is where they'd be related to my aunt's, where that same house, the rats, and Miss Sandoval's with us to get crap, or some test stuff, and everything. Fun memories of that house, always.
Well, the people that, that have it now, are they, are, is he causing you trouble? Like Bill did, or is this, is it-
That's his stepson.
I thought they sold it to somebody on contract.
That's his stepson still there, but I'm sure that he's holding it.
Okay.
They're working on it. And there's this poor woman, and she's the one that's been out there cleaning that building up the whole time. And she is a hard worker, I feel bad, but they have a big brand truck, and the brand truck pulls off a lot of stuff.
The whole set of streets over in subdivision, 1543, Hartford.
And they just keep burning on with it, or it'll be all night, and they're just-
Their land, I think.
You know, they're in the dark.
Well, I wonder, the alleys, the streets, that the first lot of blacktop is put up.
It hasn't cut the arbor, which is good. You know, they, they watch it. It's just that it's still in the alley, and it had been all cleaned, and then-
And I'm telling, all of it.
I'm not complaining, saying they're gonna get mad, get hurt again.
They're burning a little at a time, so no one will notice.
Oh, it goes up and flying, we have pictures of that, just in case something happens.
They're all too, they're up there, they're too much building, too. They're home in summer, they're all. They're not being burned all over, but I don't know what it's gonna be, but, I haven't seen them burn it yet, I'm sure they're all burned in summer.
Oh, I've got pictures, it goes white hot. But it's not on the windy days.
That's good.
It goes straight up, white hot.
All right.
Yeah.
Make a closed session.
Make motion, go in closed session.
Second.
You're doing all the things.
You're not here long enough, take your time, David.
I'm holding motion, do we have a second?
You're okay. Yeah?
Have a motion, we go back in, we got a second, our second.
Okay, back in open session, then. Uh, I said we did have closed session, no business was conducted. We are back in open session.
Okay, due to safety concerns, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we give the property owner thirty days to remove the fence out there at the, I don't know what the title of that place is.